At six o'clock, we'll go ahead and begin tonight's meeting. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. You seated? I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I'd just like to remind everyone that these board meetings are business board meetings. They are held in public. They are not public board meetings. Our board is governed by Idaho Code Title seventy-four and Title thirty-three, Chapter five, the Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, or IDAPA, and follows district policies. We do have one person for public input. Are there any others that haven't signed up yet? Okay, that would be Heather Hamilton. Yes.
Hi, I'm Heather Hamilton. I'm the lead school counselor for the Lakeland School District. Thank you for your time today. We have a couple of MOUs on the agenda: Dragonfly Support Services and Up New York Support Services. And the reason I'm bringing these MOUs to you unfortunately is just because we have a drastic need and we're not meeting the need of our of our families. So last year, we had seventy-six students enrolled in services with Heritage Health. We had sixteen that were waiting for services and a hundred and thirteen families throughout the district that were requesting therapy with Heritage Health. We since have had one of the providers leave and transition to private practice, which isn't uncommon. But that has left all of our high schools without a therapist. So there were thirty-three students being served at our high schools. We now have one student at the high school being served. And then we have multiple gaps at some of our elementary schools. So my hope is with your approval that we can help to meet the need, that our families continue to request from us and help to keep our buildings safe learning environments where our students are emotionally healthy. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about either of those agencies.
Alright, thank you. Moving on this, we have reports. We have a financial report. Do we have any comments, questions, or conversations to hold on this? So our beginning balance did end up being exactly what we said it was gonna be?
Um, it's actually a little bit higher as you'll hear in the audit report tonight. And we ended up about two hundred thousand ahead of where I expected us to land.
And you planned it that way?
Well, no. What actually helped was the one-time discretionary funding from the state of Idaho at the end of last year. I don't want to steal all I've told you thunder, but essentially if we wouldn't have had that money, we would have ended up in a hole, one point two million. So with that influx of additional revenue, we ended up ahead two hundred thousand.
Anything on the reports that have been presented?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meeting, minutes of the subcommittee meetings for acceptance, HR items, regular and special bills. Any comments on the minutes of the previous meetings?
Just a comment on the special meeting, which I was not an attendance at, so I wanted to see what went on. There were two or three motions that were passed. But there's no backup. There's no attachment as to what the fees were that were actually approved, for example, that sort of thing.
Yeah, we weren't presented with anything. The gate fees came to us at a previous meeting.
Yeah, but in but in the minutes, it says approve as presented or something of that sort, but it doesn't.
It just says motion to approve?
Yeah.
So are you questioning how much they were increased and that's what you think should be identified?
Yeah, right.
Okay, alright.
I would agree with that with a little bit more detail on what exactly was. Okay, so if somebody's reading this
Right.
minute, they don't have to go back and find the agenda or the backup documentation to understand what?
I hear you. No, I absolutely hear what you're saying. I don't know that we actually went into detail because we had done that at the previous meeting. So I don't believe we can add that information because it wasn't brought out in the meeting. However, we can identify the meeting that we did talk about the dollar increase, so that there is clarification.
So there's context.
Right, and we'll just know for next time, should something like this occur, that we should really talk more about it because we do kind of go rather through all of those.
And the MOUs that was approved, you know, can we see that as an attachment to the minutes?
Yes, that can be attached, definitely. And the K-Tech parking, that was, we were provided with, I believe, the emails, email from Megan O'Dowd. So that can be attached, if you would like.
That gives a context that way.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Anything else on that meeting, Bob?
Can we, and this is just, maybe it's just me, but instead of using B when we're talking about our regular and special bills, we say expense or just fee to me implies it's revenue. I don't know. Fees are, to me, are revenues, so expenditures or expense or charge or something that... Are you still on the, oh, you're on the regular?
No, I'm on the regular, yeah. Yeah, I wasn't really sure when you were on.
So, so item G four, where we talk about the regular and special bills, if we could just not use the software hosting fee? The true removal and track fee?
Okay, so change fee to expenses is what you're asking for?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anything else within the minutes?
And to be consistent for future.
Yeah, from that point forward. Got it.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anything on the minutes of the subcommittee meetings for acceptance? Yeah. HR items? Anything on those? Okay, there's something I think. No, I don't think so. How about the regular and special bills? I do have a few questions. On our legal services, what are we consulting with Haley Troxel? Because we have Anderson, Julie in the hole, and then Megan O'Dowd. What are we also using Haley Troxel for?
Jessica Grant, I'm CFO of Chair Thompson. We use Holly Troxel for our levy and bond legal counsel.
Thank you. They help write the bill.
Yes.
Jimmy's roofing expense for the sixty-six thousand nine twenty-two for roof repairs and cleanup, was that specific to T H S?
Yes, that was one of the items that we discussed at the July eighteenth Plant Facility Levy Meeting. It was some repair work that had to do with...
I just wanted to make sure it was all for, okay, perfect. The contract for C-Matilla for K-Tech for three thousand, is that in addition to everything that we?
Yeah, Colby is the one who does all of the, on behalf of Lakeland, all of the applications at the state level for all the CTE funds to make sure we get everything we're supposed to get. He knows it inside and out.
Okay.
So it's...
Is that a consulting fee then? Because he's no longer at K-Tech.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it did go down this year. We previously paid eight thousand a year. We're not paying that much this year.
Okay.
He's worth every penny because he finds where we've got errors and I see we're not getting all the money that we should be getting from the state and will notify us and we rectify that. So it's definitely worth it.
No, that's fine. I just didn't, I mean, he's right below the K-Tech bill, so I'm like, why is that not part of the K-Tech bill? I think that's all we had.
I see that we paid, I assume it's an employee for mileage for mail delivery, and the maintenance panel is down. We need to double check that we're covered eye cramp wise for employees using their own vehicles for any kind of district. If they're on the job, I need to note that there.
Covered.
Covered.
We're actually looking into potentially purchasing a new mail. That one has far surpassed its useful life. And we basically are putting money into it when we should be replacing it.
Any other questions for?
Can I go to somebody else? I lost the line.
I would like to highlight where it says deposit for BKE Playground, seventy thousand. That should say BKE and Garwood's.
Purple.
For both.
Okay, good.
We stayed under budget on that one. We're actually going to come in under budget around two thousand dollars. And I'm hoping that will be enough to buy additional fall zone material if needed. That was an amazing opportunity to work with quite a few vendors. And what we were able to get by working with so many vendors was far exceeding what we expected to get for the dollar amount that we had.
Okay, that's awesome. Good work.
There's one here for Johnson Controls Fire Panel Inspection. It says food services. Is that only food service or was it for other schools?
Which, can you tell me which number?
One oh nine two three one.
Okay, I can bring that back to you later on in the meeting if you'd like. It just will take me a minute to pull it. But I can bring that back to you.
Yeah, it seems, I'm not sure what.
Seems like a lot.
It seems like a lot for one building.
Yeah, I will look that up.
It may include more buildings than just one.
The TLE sidewalk and ramp for Stellco.
Stellco.
Yeah.
That was to make the ramp ADA compliant there and to fix the flight block.
Okay, I thought that came through last month, though.
A small portion of it might have, but that was the final payout for it.
Okay.
We had a small amount for an additional concrete pad, I think, on the playground. For the preschool playground. I think it was nineteen eighty-five.
Anything else from anyone?
I'm good.
You're good? On that note, all in our data motion for the consent agenda.
Salute.
We have a motion in a second. I would just like to clarify that that motion, I believe, includes the corrections for the original minutes of previous meetings that were identified. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have the superintendent follow-up. Does anyone have any questions or need further feedback from the superintendent on a follow-up? I do not, no.
Okay.
David, anything?
Okay, I, just to, to follow up to my follow-up. Delta Dental typically only goes to schools with high free and reduced lunch, but because we reached out and requested potentially that they serve our other four schools, they are looking at ways to try to make that happen, so.
Awesome, great.
Once I have a, once I have a final answer from them, I will let you know, but they are looking at it.
It never hurts to ask, that's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the financial follow-up. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the financial follow-up?
Any, the letter to the Emery was included here. Have you had any subsequent communications?
We had a call with their company today and we're not able to talk with anybody that could provide an answer. We're hoping to have some more information on Monday. We have been in contact with our legal team to move forward if necessary to ensure the subcontractors are getting paid. We do have a performance and payment bond in place on that project. We do not have enough left in the contract or in the retainage to pay out the subcontractors that have not been paid at this point.
Have we had any contact with any subcontractors other than that?
Yes, I've talked to three. And our construction administrator from Architects West has reached out to all of them. We're requesting that we get unconditional lien releases from all the subcontractors to ensure that they have been paid before we pay out the pay application that we have received from the company.
Is there a potential we're gonna have to go after the bond?
Absolutely.
Don't hesitate.
I'm not.
She's all over it.
If you wouldn't mind, I would also like, so it's not on my financial follow-up, but our new Nutrition Services Director is here and I would like an opportunity just to introduce him to the board.
That'd be great, yeah.
Chris Plosa, is there any Nutrition Services Director? He's been doing amazing things since he joined the district. So I just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to meet him.
Hi, I'm Chris. Replaced Kevin after twenty-six years. I've known Kevin for twenty-two of those. Back when I first got my job down in Greenville, he actually helped mentor me. So Charles cleared. Clear back in the day. I've been in Oregon for about twenty years. Came back to Idaho to be closer to elderly parent, and so I just wanted to express my gratitude and appreciation for being here. I look forward to working for you guys and doing some good things, exciting things, some things, so.
And welcome to Lakeland.
Thank you.
Kevin says you're okay.
Just okay. He said to tell you hello, or you actually just spoke to him today, so. Yeah, the morning. I can go to this weekend, so.
Alright.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, yes.
Anything else on the financial follow-up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the facilities update.
Adam Wilson, interim director of facilities.
How's it going?
It's going alright. How are you?
Okay.
Just following up from last meeting, Garwood Elementary's reached out several times, both Jake and Debbie Plosson. There's a food service door there. It's on the exterior of the six-foot fencing. It's been reported as a safety issue. It is an old-style lock that is unlocked and is able to be left unlocked. It's not a store-in style lock, but where it's keyed entry and the key's pulled and it's automatically locked. So he finds it several times a week. It's our base entrance and our food service delivery entrance, so it is definitely a safety issue. We did hear back from Architectural Hardware. To replace the panic bar in the outside handle is seventeen hundred nine dollars. I did a little bit of research on it today. It's pretty in line. I think the panic bar you can find a little bit cheaper, but the trim kit, the rim housing, and everything else is pretty in line, plus or minus a few dollars. So there's another set outdoors at Garwood that are like that. The panic bars are still pretty intact. I was speaking with one of the guys at maintenance. He said that he believes that we can just replace the handles on those on the exterior, so it wouldn't be like the full cost. But the seventeen hundred is necessary, or that was the quote that we received.
Okay.
Stair treads, Timberlake High School. The original quote that we got from Fairway was six thousand nine hundred twenty-seven staircase for a total of thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four. We did receive two additional quotes from Pelmax Flooring. Six thousand four hundred twenty-eight staircase for a twelve thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollar total. And Accent Floor &amp; Design, seven thousand four hundred seventy-five a staircase or fourteen thousand nine hundred fifty total. I was asked to do a little research on material cost for that project if we were to do it in-house. And what I had found was the like-for-like replacement of those treads from two different websites, just material costs alone, does not include tools. Coughler Sales Company, I put together a card for what I feel we need for that project, and just the material costs alone came to ten thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars. And then the other one was AmericanStairTreads.com, and the material cost of that came to ten thousand one hundred six dollars and eighty cents. That doesn't include tools that are necessary for that job, and I'm not sure what, I mean, what we'll actually need to complete that work in-house. The stair treads up there are kind of an odd size. They're, the stairs that are sixty-four inches wide. What I've found is you can only find treads in sixty or seventy-two inch lengths. So every tread would have to be trimmed out in both length and the depth of them. So the existing stair treads are eleven and a half inches deep. What is sold online are twelve and a half. So, I mean, everything, the existing risers that are there are six inches tall and they are sold in seven-inch heights. So it's a lot of excess work.
Which could potentially explain the costs.
Right, yeah, and I don't know as far as what a timeline would be to do it in-house. Speaking with the flooring companies, it sounds like it would take them just a couple of days per staircase. So, and then there would be warranty with that work as well.
Right. That alone is making the huge additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Lakeland Middle School Abatement, I did speak with them. They said that it would be better for them to do a summer project for that, just to have the carpeting company follow up. So they said that they could probably do the abatement. But basically having a company come in as they do it wouldn't be realistic, so the abatement could be done over Christmas break if there was a push for it. We have to take into consideration Christmas holiday and New Year's, so that's two extra working days that they won't be.
Did they, did they happen to say how long it would take for them to do what needs to be done?
Well, when I spoke with Compass, it was about a two-week time. And then carpeting would have to come in after that. We did, so the original quote from Compass was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. It sounded like we reached out to AirTech as well for the abatement quote. That's who Compass was actually using for that piece. We did receive the quote from AirTech. It came in at a hundred and fifty-one thousand, but we also have to monitor that job ourselves in-house. So we have to basically have somebody on-site and we have to have a third-party, third-party company for air quality monitoring throughout that project.
Oh, okay.
So having Compass do it, I mean, they basically control the entire project, start to finish.
Okay.
We're still looking for additional quotes for weed spraying. We reached out to Three Trees, they said no. We did get, we reached out to Bestway, who handles the contracts at Post Falls School District and Coeur d'Alene as well. They're not sure that they can take on another district of the size because they do residential as well. So we have not received anything from them. We did receive a quote from Green Max, which is out of Hayden. And the quote on that was fifty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-five. So with a local company, I think, you know, with Zensky, they have wholesale buying power. They're a national company, so they're able to keep prices a little bit lower. We did reach out to Messer. They're a full-service lawn care company, so they wanted to take on the mowing as well. It doesn't sound like they're interested in just doing the aeration and... Oh, with the flooring piece for Lakeland Middle School as well, I know that we talked a little bit briefly about polished concrete as an option. We reached out to Ultimate Concrete Coatings here in Rathrum, gave them the square footage of the room, and we just found out today that they're not interested in doing the job.
Okay.
So we'll have to go back to the drawing. It was just, yeah, very briefly, man.
Okay. So be it.
Timberlake Junior Tackle is working with us to put goalposts and a scoreboard at Timberlake Middle School. Salmon Electric has run power out there, so there's a pedestal on that side for future power for their small concession stand and to run the scoreboard. It sounded like, when I spoke with Junior Tackle, that all the goalposts were being donated and they were handling that piece. Lakeland Junior Tackle received their LED lighting grant from Avista. And they're gonna be replacing the lighting here to LED on the field.
That's great.
It was thirty-four thousand dollars in rebates that they received, so the whole project is covered.
It just, as a reminder, we didn't bring that back to the board for approval because you had actually approved last year the change in lighting and they put that off because they felt like they needed to address the field itself. So now they're coming back for it, but that's why we like to say.
Do you know, have the poles out there been checked recently?
Yeah, I doubt I'm not. Doubt I'm not.
The light poles?
Yeah. They don't want to do that. We had that about another year or so on there. See your poles all the time, all the time.
Yes, definitely.
You're gonna have somebody coming up with poles.
I'm sure they'll check it out, but they go up there.
Well, somebody, somebody needs to.
Yeah, they're...
They're gonna install everything, right?
Yeah, everybody that's installing it, their original lift and everything, so everybody will actually be on the pole itself, but yeah, that makes sense.
Was Avista installing the bulbs or is Lakeland?
Uh, I forget what. It's B&amp;H Electric.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Final thing that I have, and it came up just recently at Garwood and previously at Lakeland High School. We had issues with the fire panels there, failures to communicate. We have a call into Zipley. But last night, we had to do fire watch, and tonight, we're gonna have to do fire watch at Garwood as well because there's a failure to communicate on the panel.
Oh, wow.
So the fire system is working, like all the horn strokes will work. Smoke detectors are working, but the dialer is not reaching out, so we can't call Intermountain and we cannot call the fire department if there is a fire. So I had somebody on-site last night. I'll be on-site tonight.
Do I have to do it all weekend?
We, yeah, if, if... So from what I understand, Zipley maintains the lines out there, but if they're old phone lines, it doesn't sound like they're replacing it. There is an option through Intermountain to go cellular with that. The upfront cost for that is four thousand three hundred twenty for the district, throughout the district. That's every building.
Is it four thousand for each building or four thousand?
No, that's a little... So...
That's what I thought you meant, but it just seems a little cheap considering all the expenses we have for all the...
It's even cheaper because the per-month cost at each site will be twenty-five dollars as opposed to a hundred and eighty-five.
Wow.
So it'll be a significant decrease in the cost benefit for it. We're just gonna have to get it done.
It will pay the hurt, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and just having... Can't be in the building.
Well, that brings down. Building, that's a problem.
We thought I had on that one, guys.
Way to think that. That's great.
So fire watch is required, and if we don't provide it and something were to happen, our insurance would not pay anything for any damage. And the law says that we have to, every two hours, somebody else to basically walk the building, but because the panel... Or any damage, um, and the law says that we have to every two hours, somebody else to basically walk the building, but because the panel right now is working. Our uh, Adam tonight just has to go in and and check to make sure that none of the alarm people are there, he's gotta do it every two hours.
I'm sorry, but thank you.
Yeah, that's, if if they're not able to remedy that tomorrow, we may have to do it through the weekend too, I don't. I did reach out to Jim, he said that it's pretty easy to install.
Okay.
Those things, so I mean, starting with Garwood would be.
A plus, yes.
Privilege.
It does make me wonder like, why hasn't, hasn't that been offered to us before now?
Apparently it was brought to somebody last year.
Yeah, this, well, this proposal's from September of twenty twenty.
Are we, if, in?
I did reach out to him today to find out if the pricing is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
He, um, he's a former parent and he's a kid who went to daycare, so he's very vested in the district, so. For long.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for, for Adam?
I appreciate his thoroughness.
That's, yeah, amazing, thank you.
We're, we're still doing a little extra research, I think it's really important, so.
That's huge. Okay, so we can move into new business, um, first up is the audit reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, welcome.
Uh, just clicking, good to see you guys all again this year, my name's Tony Maston, I'm with Hayden Ross. Appeared tonight to give the uh results of the audit. You know, we're gonna set the graphs up, um, before we kinda dive, dive into the numbers. Thank you. So we're gonna be issuing a, you have the draft set of financial statements and and the board pack, but we will be issuing the final. And we're issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements. Uh, which is great, that means that uh the financial statements are fairly stated. Uh, part of this package is also, I'm not gonna go through it, but there's an indie governance letter, which is just required communication with the board. That talks through some of the upcoming auditing standard or accounting standards, some of the significant estimates of the financial statements. And most importantly, that we didn't have any disagreements with management, so. Uh, I did wanna take a second to thank Jessica and Chelsea for all of their hard work. I had, they had very clean uh set of books for me to audit when I came in. Um, we had minimal amount adjustments this year, all of them were immaterial and uh that's just. Treat when I get to do that because that's not how all of them work, so I wanted to say, say, we were for that.
That worked.
Yeah, it's always, that's, and that's really the reason why we were out here at the right beginning of September, so. To start an audit and be here uh basically a month later is just a testament to just being in good shape. As part of the audit, we obviously did the financial statement audit. Uh, we also did the, it's called a single audit, and we talked about that in the past, is when the district spends over. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal award money, you're required to have a federal single audit. And it's uh more of a compliance audit where we come in and we look at specific programs, test specific uh compliance items to make sure that there's an internal control structure in place. Provides reasonable assurance that all those grant compliances are being followed. Uh, this year we, we audited two programs, we audited the S R money again, um, I've been, we've been auditing even the S R money for. For the last couple of years, all over all the districts, uh, but that's coming to an end, obviously, in this year. And then this year we picked up, uh, it's been off the, off the list for a couple of years, the child nutrition came back on, so uh. Uh, so we did also audit child nutrition and we didn't have any findings of either of the programs, so. Uh, today I'm just gonna go through the major funds of the districts, we're just gonna do results of the general fund. The debt service fund and the capital projects fund, and we're gonna start with the general fund. Got the graph up here. General fund started the year with a fund balance and equity of four million five hundred eight thousand dollars. Total revenues last year were forty-seven thousand four hundred forty-five, forty-seven million four hundred forty-five thousand. Full expenditures of forty-seven million two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, ending with a fund balance of four million seven hundred and eleven dollars. Which is, as Jessica pointed out, was a two hundred and two thousand dollar increase in fund balance. If we look at uh ten-year trends, ten-year history, revenue and expenses, uh, I just always like to look at this kinda get, get the revenue come from. And eight of the last ten years, you have to do these expenditures. And you have a run there from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two, where you had an increase each and every year. Uh, last year you have a lot of four point five one, you've got a lot of loss in the general fund, but you recovered this year for that, that two hundred and fifty-two thousand. Increase in fund balance. What that has done to the fund balance of the district, we're actually a little busy. Uh, first of all, the district has a minimum fund balance policy, those are the two sort of lighter green lines sort of going to the middle. That's the top end and the lower end of the fund balance policy. Uh, in fiscal year twenty, the policy was changed to effectively that, that space in between the two analysis. One month is the low and two months is the high, so the fund balance policy, you know, put up one, is to stay between the one and two months worth of operating expenditures in the fund balance. Uh, the, the other two lines, it kinda, they, they dropped in, in fiscal year twenty-three, that's your actual ending fund balances. So you can see in between the, on the far right there, your fund balance ended with a four point seven million dollars. There's a nuance here I wanna talk about, because there is two different fund balance lines, the top one is your total fund balance, ending at four point seven. The uh line that sort of mirrors it but's a little bit lower is your actual, your unassigned fund balance, so that your policy is technically about your unassigned fund balance in between one, two months. The reason why there is a difference is at the end of this year twenty-four, there was an assigned fund balance of seven hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. And what that was for is the amount of fund balance that was budgeted to balance the budget for this year twenty-five. So board action effectively assigned that fund balance for that piece. So that's why you're gonna see the actual unassigned fund balance ended the year at the three million nine twenty-one, or excuse me, the three million nine fifty-eight. It's just uh just right above that one line, so still within the policy, but there are some nuances with the fund balance. Look at total revenues a little bit closer last year. Again, total revenues were forty-seven million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. It's really made up between local and state, local's gonna be your tax levy and any other local money that came in like interest earnings. The levy last year, uh, total local dollars were ten million one twenty-one, that was down about three hundred and forty thousand dollars year over year. Kind of two pieces to that, your levy was flat for fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four. But the state uh kicked in with their uh plant facility fund money and actually lowered the approved levy by uh. Eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the actual levy that's announced to the citizens, was eight hundred and eighteen dollars less than the levy amount that the district had approved. So that was a reduction of your levy dollars that had been netted to about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you had uh levy monies less than last year. But you also had interest earnings of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars total prior to. Total interest earnings last year in the general fund, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So much more significant interest in the environment than what we're talking about. State money is obviously making up a big piece of the general fund, fund budget at thirty-seven million one hundred and eighty. That was an increase of about five million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars year over year. So with your state funding, and you guys all know this, just to sort of recap what happened last year. First of all, from fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four, the state funded this supporting this base, you can say on the full one. So the temporary ruling backed it, it ate the gate, so I would say it was ten. The school ended up into protective support units, so if you drop too much, it just sort of protect the number of support units you had. Your support unit dropped to two hundred and forty-one, that's two hundred and forty-one of this year twenty-three to two hundred and twenty-three in fiscal year twenty-four. So that's a pretty significant drop in terms of the support units. To counter that a little bit, the base support that the state did on a first supporting the basis went from thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-four first support unit. Up to forty-one thousand three ninety-one, so they significantly funded supporting us at a higher, higher value as, in such fashion, on lots of that. Uh, and then what also came into your state piece right at the end of the year. House Bill seven sixty-three was supplemental discretionary money that the state issued. The district received one million four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars of that, which is somewhat budgeted. And that money is included in the revenues for this year twenty-four, even though that money didn't add up in twenty-two. They don't have it for the year, but you get to count it in the revenues. And as Jessica pointed out, without that state funding, your two, your two hundred thousand dollars that increase would have looked closer to about one. Two one, three hundred dollars for following up on this last year. What that would have done to your fund balance policy is left with, you guys, about, about five percent or about just over half of this worth of operating expenditures. So uh, it was, it was good that that money came in for. Your other funds there, the hundred forty-three thousand dollars of your D rate money that you did at the state of the year. If we look at just some historical trends, in terms of funding of the general fund, again, a ten-year history here with your far right being the most current year. The district's levy, like we talked about, uh, have actually had a flat levy for the last three years and for fiscal year twenty-five, four years in a row at that nine million five hundred fifty thousand dollars. You can see that your state funding as a percentage basis, really has been on a percentage basis, funding the district more, the expenditures of the district, more of the revenue coming in. Even though that dollar amount at the local level has been basically staying constant, so that you've just been receiving more state money in comparison to your local money. And that's dropped your reliance on that local down. This last year was a little bit without discretionary, it dropped in percentage, but you've been about that twenty-five percent, this percent line for you, for your local levy. Um, and just as a comparison, uh, just looking at what does that mean? We see some of the other districts that are comparable to you, we see that local piece, so that levy, local levy piece being thirty-five, thirty percent. Comparison is some different things, but uh, we do audits on this, as, as it is possible. Looking at the expenditures a little bit closer, total expenditures were forty-seven million two hundred and forty-three thousand. That was an increase of about six hundred thousand dollars year over year. I've broken this out between instruction-related expenses and support-related. Instruction expenditures were twenty-eight million four hundred and twenty-four thousand, that was an increase of about two point three million dollars a year over year. That was almost exclusively, but was exclusively in salaries and benefits, so all of the increased in salary is a benefit. Sellers and benefits make up ninety-five point five percent of all your construction related expenses, so that's, put that as a separate piece of the salaries and benefits. Support expenditures, ended the year eighteen million three hundred four thousand, which was an increase of about one twenty-three million dollars year over year. And again, salaries and benefits uh effectively led that entire increase in capital, salaries and benefits, including the sister last year. Sellers and benefits represented about forty-six percent of all the support related, or support related expenditures. Transfers were three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars last year, primarily that's your bus depreciation transfers, so required transfer of three hundred sixty-six thousand dollars to your bus depreciation fund. And your Medicaid transfer of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, looking at a ten-year trend, just to see your sort of historical breakout between instruction and support. The district's been right in the same ratio, it's real consistent, you can see that in this, in this graph here. Over your ten-year history, instructions represented about fifty-nine percent of total expenditures. Support equal three, eight point seven percent, which is the exact percentage that is this year, so this year the. If you look at your total expenditures, just from the payroll, salaries and benefits window. Uh, total payroll and benefits across both instruction and support amounted to forty-one million one hundred forty-four thousand dollars, or eighty-seven percent of the general fund. Eighty-seven percent, that was an increase of about three point eight million dollars year over year. Your other expenses, that's not discretionary, right, your other expenses are still your utilities, your purchase services, your supplies and materials, capital outlay. And all of your transfers, so uh, those were about twelve point nine percent of the total expenditures. Looking at those historical trends. Between payroll and benefits and other expenses, you're similar to your ten-year averages, uh, historically, you've spent about eighty. Eighty-five, eighty-six percent of your expenditure, or expenditures and salaries and benefits, or eighty-seven percent this year. For the most part, that's, you would help steady on purchase services and supplies, materials and capital outlay, for the most part, kind of restricts a little bit. Uh, last year was a little bit of an anomaly, you can see that, like, like that, last year that there was that additional transfer uh for the core contract. Uh, to two million eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, so that's an expenditure and that plan and that other expenses, that's not, that's not last year. All right, debt service fund, started the year with. Fund balance of one million six hundred and three thousand dollars, revenue is this last year of a million. So again, we talked about the house, house bill, two ninety-two money, the plans, uh, for the uh. But again, that tool, district facility fund money, they're originally budgeted. Yeah, so the tax. So no levy to the taxpayers. On the expenditure side, you had your principal payments, uh, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Debt service fund, industrial, down, one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Good news is, hold on, even, hold on, you were thinking about. Did you, uh? So it's done, it's done, I don't know. All right, capital projects fund, so this is capital projects fund, started the year with two million eight hundred four thousand dollars. This was a fund take purposes, this fund is going to be, school facilities, school projects, and, and, and plus appreciation, all of capital. Uh, again, start here, twenty, twenty dollars in balance, revenue of one million four thousand dollars, which is, so what do you think, start this after? Expenditures were all your capital purchases that we paid for, but we started, we started our research. And the ending fund balance was two million nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Capital projects fund, doing what is designed to be. For you guys tonight, uh, this is takeaway, the general fund, you can read in the document. For you guys tonight, this is takeaway, the general fund, you can write in the box with my balance policy. Debt service fund, this is a good, uh, debt, so that's awesome for the district.
Motion in a second, one, two, three, say aye. Aye. Close, very good motion carries. And, yeah. There, there is a thing, there's the, the question here that I'm, I'm, I'm putting, um, to split it. Uh, gonna have to let you know the organization that we, we have a question. Why are these stipulations instead of just moving them up? Well, when we, we could do that, we would, you know, we serve. You're doing much better than I'm doing. Seem to have a stipend. Paying people for what they're worth for the job that they're doing, I think is, is significant. And we've talked repeatedly about minimizing as best as we can all these stipends. So if it's a matter of compensating someone for the position that they're doing, then I think we need to do that. Unless there's a specific reason why we can't do that.
Right, so would your preference be then, what you're saying is maybe the preference would be that we create that? What are the additional duties and how do you get from this column over to this column? And put it, actually, I believe, positions identified in the salary matrix for classified, we don't have a salary matrix like certified. So the certified salary schedule is literally one column. So there aren't those lanes. And a lot of these positions are certified people, but for the classified people, certainly. And actually, the classified people do have a column. We have a separate column for, like, lead librarians, no.
No. We do have a motion, second, uh, our favorite. I made this very nice. I read something in the region, which is better. Dr. Hadley is trying to move on the, on the sets to, to develop, which had his, his, the other. Next up, we have board policy, first, the electronic devices, volunteer assistance, which includes the policy for submitted application. And volume to continue disclosure and distribution requirements. Policies sometimes do not come with a policy, and that is something just. With respect to electronic devices, it had come back, suspended the board a few times. But Bob made it clear that he wanted it stated. First of all, clear it within this policy. So it took us a few days, but I believe it is now clearly stated that we don't want cell phones used in schools. The only exclusion is that high school students, a lot of very, because those get, they get, they get. But within middle and elementary, we don't allow your cell phone devices, electronics, whatnot, on that person's, in person's house. But it's supposed to be. They have that, not, what do you mean? They're allowed to use them in the first school and after school. Right. They don't have lockers to put them in, so. At no time will cellular phones or other personal, right? Be allowed in class. Well, I mean, it's my understanding that, like, at elementary, they study majority of, not all of classrooms. Pretty much all the students wear backpacks, they're putting their cell phone in their backpack and they're coming. But that's in the classroom, that's technically in the classroom, so. Okay, so how should we remove that sentence? Be used in the classrooms. Then they're not used. Okay. So we can change the word allowed it to be used? Is that what changed the context? So that, um, you know, if they have it, they want to keep it on their desk and they can stay on their desk. But because they're not using it, it's just in the classroom. Or we could kind of support it and not with saying it cannot be used in the classroom, they should be kept in a child's, your backpack or, you know. Something that the child brings, their coat, and we put it in a zipper pocket. Well, we say earlier, we say personal electronic devices may not be used during class time except for laptops used in place of district issued protocols. Correct. We've already said it, we've already said that they can't be used. I'm not following you, I'm sorry. Because if you want to change this sentence that we're talking about, at no time will cellular phones or other personal devices be allowed in the classroom. To just be, to be, will not be used, we've already said that in this sentence above. Okay, to personal electronic devices. We were calling out the fact that some kiddos are going to bring their own personal laptops because parents have bought it and that's what the kid wants and that's what they're bringing to school. So we're, we're giving concession to that, but we're not giving concession to telephones. So that's where there was kind of a differentiation.
Gotcha.
Okay. Uh, and I'll show. Specific thing, yeah. Because it's, that's very problematic for some. Teachers and students.
So phones and smartwatches.
Yeah. And that's what the personal, other personal electronic devices are, is, you know, earbuds, smartphones, anything else that kids can use for communication. Because they're, you know, little tech wizards, very young ages. So do we still feel that changing the allowed to use is the appropriate correction on this policy?
I think so, yeah.
Any other corrections within the language on the policy?
Only other question I have, do the principals review this in depth?
Yes, yes, well, they have the opportunity to review it in depth. It's un-sent to.
And feedback essentially is?
Uh, well, we, we had.
It all went to.
It did, it was, it was really positive feedback. A lot of, of principals and some of the teachers that came to the meetings were like, get them out of the classroom. They're very much a distraction. And just, we did get comments back from parents because it was sent out for survey or for parent input. And the majority of the parents were in favor of it. So, because I think it's just become a snowball problem that no one anticipated, but it's become. So maybe we just say that they're not be, they will not be used and must be kept out of sight, something like that to where they're. Okay. In a backpack or in a pocket or.
Okay.
But not.
Not in their house.
Not sitting out on their desk either, right. I'm not using it, but it's sitting right there.
There's a one, one thing I got. So the use of cameras in any type of electronic device, should we really mark green classrooms? And classrooms? Well, we have photographers in class. So told the kids they can take, uh, not the other test, but what I can.
Well, you're looking at the. Right, but, but that's.
Is that the ability?
I think it's a point of. No, 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 I appreciate that. It's. What is, what is it? To English. Okay, it's not in the policy, that was just completely struck. So we're not saying that. That's just to show us all the problems. But then we have the full origin of. Yeah. And the reason it was struck is because if we're completely removing the cell phone, there should be no concern for photographs being taken. That's usually all written, just a lot. So that's, that's not an impossible. So are you comfortable with the language just being changed and going into that?
Yep.
Perfect. And I would look through, with the change. Motion in a second, one, two, three, say aye. Aye. Close, very good motion carries. Living on to volunteer assistance. The policy has become a forest for many, many years. And then we have procedures which are more in-depth in the policy and the policy is pretty clear, so cut and dry. And then we have the application that had, um, input from.
I took the, the applications, all six. Just make sure that all of the questions that we were asking were in there somewhere in the, in the.
And that was kind of the struggle was, I don't know, doing, and the. Maybe so. Good to have a district wide. Yeah, what about, absolutely. Does anyone have any, uh, question, conversations that, uh, input in the policy?
This, uh, right here. They're in the box.
Did you, this was, this was. That's a touch. Those were all the practices.
Yep.
As we cleaned up and went through and.
I don't like the excluded definition of employee, employee's. Problem is that in the past, people who have their volunteers over there, who have. Who, whatever you call it, and basic protection, uh, can do. So if you have volunteer coverage, stands up like kid, make this, you know, you don't.
I think the way we.
So it's.
Volunteer status is.
That's within the procedure.
Yeah.
Um, within the policy, what it's stating, when you read it in its entirety, is volunteers are people who assist in school or district programs and are individuals who are excluded from the definition of employee under appropriate state statutes.
But that doesn't give you any protection.
Well, but the, the protection is actually found within procedures, the policies that are key.
That, that's just saying that employee isn't considered a volunteer, that's what that language is saying. A volunteer is somebody who doesn't work for the district.
Well, that's the thing is you do, when you do, you do work for the district.
But you're not. But you're not. Convinced.
You're, I know you're not convinced, but you have to go through a background check, you have to go through, through your background.
All we're doing is defining that a volunteer is a person who isn't employed by the school district. That's all that that's saying. If you go over there. Go back to agenda items. Up above. School hallway, yeah. Um, for termination, if it's a volunteer, can be dismissed from serving for the following. Breach of confidentiality concerning students or other privileged information. Unlawful conduct of a branch of the district laws and regulations. Visceral. Visceral emotional stress which incapacitates a volunteer. Activities that threaten the safety of student staff and a volunteer. Activities that threaten the safety or security of the educational environment. And that if you have a lot of volunteers, such as on their established inappropriate relationships with students and criminal charges or convictions and crimes. So in the scenario where you have a volunteer participating in our students. They would be able to just be immediately fired unless there is cause within this longer list of termination. And then in that, they would still have the ability to go back, to go back to superintendent to save their position. Because there is protection for volunteers who still have to live within the policy.
Right, I understand.
Right. Does that help clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Cameras, yeah.
And that's what everyone in every school.
It's too good.
So like.
Motion in a second.
It's a little loud.
Or loud, any people call it loud. All I care to say, aye.
Aye.
Any post, hearing them, the motion carries, hearing them, the volunteer disclosure and certification requirements. I suggest that, did this, um. I, I'm curious, on this policy, page two, which. It says note, a routine IRS audit is reportable because it could lead to adverse tax watching. Will need that. Yes, statement, okay. And then you have that. Uh, no, no, that's.
Read through.
Hide it recently. Um, is there a language can be, um, on? Um. This on patient therapy, um, the communication of emergency consultation or acquisition involving an obligated person. Right, this appointment of a successor or additional trustee to do with the change, having of adjusting material, where's the relation? Because these terms are material, but I don't understand the other sense. No, it didn't be fine.
Yeah.
They did, that's why you have to read through it and make it into simple plain language. It does, yeah, it does.
Oh, yeah.
It does it. I think that, yeah. So there's. Oh, that's okay. Um, okay, so.
Oh, okay, there, but, um, we're related to altering, uh, we would have to obtain some other, um, it. It's, it's, it's. They, they prefer that, so I mean, there's a, there's a material, and that might need to be higher.
No, and, and I get what you're saying, I guess my, what my, uh, pickup is on the language. Um, so what we could possibly do, if you don't mind, oh, we could table this and maybe look a little deeper at the language at the community level. Maybe for instance, it, roll them to, because the appointment of a successor trustee, I don't know if that's referring to the law council. Or if that's referring to the older trustees in the district, but that, that's where I'm like, what is this referring to?
I think how many different additional information for you?
That would be perfect. So we, we have to table the policy seven, seven, ten. Wait, in the motion in the second, I'll move to aye. Aye. Any post, hearing the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the updated organizational chart, we've had a couple of changes, so.
We'll have to change it again, we added, um, the SRO at twin, um, added his name and then now we need to go back and add the new SRO that is at.
So do we table it?
Yeah.
Since we know that it's going to be changed again? Oh, okay.
Well, no, I think we can.
Approve what changes.
Can Anthony just approve the addition of, the addition of.
The addition of the.
Stephanie Morelock is the name.
But I have a question, so the Cutin County Sheriff isn't between the high school and the middle school anymore, it's, he's just high school? Okay.
He was kind of popping over when he, when he was available, but they keep him pretty busy in the high schools, so.
Okay.
Awesome female SRO.
Hopefully she'll make it through this a little bit.
She, she will spend part of her day each day at the service, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, so we will make that adjustment. If the board approves the change, without question.
Okay. I will move to approve with the changes, the pending changes.
Okay.
In the motion in the second, all I care to say, aye.
Aye.
Any post, hearing them, the motion carries. Moving on to the Northwest Special Hospital in New York. So their expectation is only for the athletic trainer to wear their logo.
Not their logo, it will have our logo on the chest and then it will just say sponsored by. Um, and when I talked to the brass, he said that is problematic for the, for assistance from that side. What is most important is that there's some signage there, it did come on the board, or it's just.
Right.
The game of athletics. Chair Thompson, we do have even a lot of our work especially at the hospital, we have an excessive issues.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Who else is doing this?
Everybody.
Court Elaine, Post Falls.
You can come up to the podium, please.
Yes.
Just identify yourself.
So we did start this. Oh, yes, sorry, I'm Amy Reynolds, I am the executive director of clinic operations in Northwest Speciality Hospital. A physician in the hospital in Post Falls. And we did just this year sponsor the athletic trainers for Court Elaine's School District. And, and essentially the terms aren't the same, so it's indicated.
So Court Elaine is the home school district, that is correct, okay. And we currently do not have a number of trainers.
Chad. At Lakeview. And, um, I did. With, um, who also is sensitive, um, to make sure the professional baseball. And, um, I wanted to, um, to go to the baseball, um, to make sure that she was, um, in this, um, in this consideration. And, um, she absolutely is, um, this partnership alone will allow us to, maybe, um, um, wage for opposition requires necessary training. Must be able to find a position, um, for the statute and so. So, and the maybe it's. We have a local position. And that trying to get to coordinate with the, with this, with. So, I would have to, uh. That is a good position.
Uh, I'm just mentioning, um, certain partnerships, which I.
Yes, certain partnerships is a corporate owner, I don't know what specialities, though it, it, majority owned by a street brand, which is a, um. A public literature entity, and, and then it is my party.
Local position.
Would you approve?
Second. Um, I do think that it would be preferred for our employees. With their lower sponsorship on their person. All the signage that we're going to be doing against situations. So we should be going to the motion.
Okay. Well, I, I just feel like my relationship on the, um, the, and will be, um, school branded, so we, we need to, we need to really cover this. To pass on access to this, um, athletic gear, agency, we, um, see, there's, um. Can't be, which is that the athletic team is sponsored by, that's a special. So just like a whole different test to, um, let us, we believe that will be mainly geared toward us to, of the athletic gear. That's something that we, we just need to, help us. Additional. These shows that make ideas, these shows where we, um, sponsor is also not, um, not as hard as.
No, that was.
So it's, yeah. Of course, that's.
I could go approve with the logo.
I second what's on the logo. Um, all I care to say, aye.
Aye.
Any post, like, read favor, what a post, the carries. Moving on to the Upper North Council in New York.
We have, uh, we have a second, so, perhaps, just about to do this.
Oh, no. I, that would be, uh, 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 learning. I did share both of these with, um, uh, attorney. She had, um, my change, it was. For, for, um. So I did, um, I did provide a good, her, to, um, to those of these individuals. And ask them to roll their, after, first, in the review. Um. The insurance is that, you know, these, these. So Upper North Council, you don't state that it, or TRICARE, and it's more restricted. As far as the type of expenses they can take, which you have a little bit more, uh, concern about, um, it's two, that this one is an interim. Directive life support services, serves Medicaid, food costs, TRICARE, um, both providers are LDCs. One is a male, and the female, the male is a former husband. So there's a little bit of difference between the two as far as available, um, again, insurance coverage, but the most part, um. The, the need of that, I believe, should be very similar, and then I asked, um, the superintendent to have a review. The, and it was just to make sure, both agencies are super receptive, so we change something a little bit, we just really want to help kids. Um, they're really excited about the opportunity to serve, um, and a little bit concerned about whether or not Upper North will be able to. Have a wide enough referral base, a lot of our kids that, um, are in this service are Medicaid. Um, it seems like that seems to be a prominent referral source, but I think, but we, um, we'd like to have an intention to, 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 to. This is what we consider, and I wanted to present both matches third, because we have a decision. Either way, we have. Serial, in the way, students, access services. And we have a bad, another, have disenthokeep track machine, and a special kind of bad call for, for agencies that we can talk about. It's like, um, and you'll be having, and we need, uh, we need with the debtless, probably. What, um. Collaborative program development efforts running in the, for our district. Um, we work pretty closely with the debtless staff, our relatives, uh. And one of the things that we, I've talked to four agencies about is we really, we want us to have a close relationship, have a significant relationship. And merely, um, in terms of, we have students that have meetings or having a, she's a professor. We want to invite them to participate, provide us feedback, um, to how, how this does one's school. How can we be able to, to help, um. And we, we can make her to tell Sierra about the attention we serve, we have, uh, some of our five reports. Um, in some of the cases, she was happy, it seemed like they were, um, allowing students to have too much time, excessive amount of time. To school, and maybe what it does, um, and was able to bring that information back to our, to our student, and we, that, that needs addressed to the trust. To, that's more, um, education related five reports, um, sometimes we have, um, agencies offer, such as this is a crisis response. Um, Sierra, and some of the, some of the crisis response that we have actually not paid in that, that is super helpful. Really just, really just depends, but in terms of our operation, it's very geared towards the school. I can't anticipate any, anything beyond.
Well, the statement says LJSD will invite providers to participate in initial and ongoing collaborative program development efforts with LJSD's staff and administrators. I was just wondering what, uh, collaborative program development efforts.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I interpret that as just ongoing communication, and we're all, um, so there are, uh. And that's something that I, and this is, it's helping better for kids, we're concerned about the referral process, um. Basically, just working on whatever, we're doing, that we see, and also trying to really make our services efficient. Um, we were able to do a cruise ship, there's also a happy, that actually had a description of the care pressing, the services that they provide. Uh, they created a flow chart, uh, for, like, where the information goes and, and really outline our goal and care to change it. So that's one of the, so some things that we need to, really make something in communication, uh, for them. Now, we have some of those processes in place, we really can't anticipate that, what we can, what we can do in the long run, because we won't build the systems. And the processes that happen, that we can actually, so.
Um, and I'm curious, it says provider agrees to, and then it goes through a longer list, um, but it says resolve conflicts and concerns. Um, anticipating direct dialogue, if a professional or staff has concerns, he or she must first report the concern to the applicable school building principal or his or her designated lead. And then there's a process, level one, and there's a level two and a level three, and at no point are we communicating with parents or the family. Why?
Well, that, that, that should be, I mean, that's a, that's a problem across us. But we can, we can be, we can be more specific, certainly, about a few. But we can, we can be, we can be more specific, certainly about a few. Very popular, that's the thing, but in the next chapter, I think, I have to, I have to let you have that.
It's under provider responsibilities. And F, it just states provider agrees to, that, that's all it states.
I mean, there needs some clarity. So that is looking at the law, the M O S, it seem like it's more of a personnel thing and not student.
That's how I interpreted it as well. That's, that's what I'm trying to.
So we might need to put this on the, do you hear, topic? Yeah.
I would not to table this MO, the up north counseling MOU until we have it more closely aligned with what we have with Heritage Health. And make sure that those.
Very similar.
Yeah, some of those items are edited to, to be more clear.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, and one other thing, you know, we don't know who these people are. We do know something about Heritage Health.
Yes.
So to provide some background information on each of these.
The agencies? We'll, we'll grab that back.
So I guess I will amend my motion to include the Dragonfly Counseling, uh, in that, in tabling that one as well until we have a little bit more information on those.
And it, it might be helpful for me too, because there are, because this should be very similar to the Heritage Health contract. If I just have very specific feedback on what the concerns are, because I've had that happen where I come back and, and I have the MOU and I think I have it dialed in and then we have additional comments. So please just let me know whatever feedback you have on both contracts and then I'll go back through, um, and, and make sure that each one is, um, it should, it should be ve- very similar because that's the contract that I shared with both agencies. Um, and then I do have a brochure on Dragonfly Support Services and some background information on, on folks, but I can share that with you.
Do we have a motion to the second? Aye, and you opposed, very near the motion carries. Moving on to the snowmills, um, two hour late starts, do you have a conversation, comments, discussions?
Yes. Just the dinner.
Um, so the difference between those two is, um, like on our more challenging areas of our district, like out on the rim line. So we'll either do the two hour late start or the abbreviated route. And when it's the abbreviated route, it's like so short that it is not quite as late as a two hour start because the school's not starting two hours later than it is a shorter route, so that's why.
So if you're on the shorter route, aren't you finding it's the same, um, that's right?
No, it's the, because instead of doing like a full hour route, it's closer to like a half an hour.
Are the two hour late starts, I should walk into that.
Yeah. But it's also the abbreviated route too, because we figured if we're going to be doing two hour late, it's maybe a day or not. So not that we don't want to go up to all this.
And when you run two hours late, it's just, it's got power at school, it's just, uh.
So instead of, and when we have to do that, we bring a certification to the floor for acceptance, just that we would be, uh, to assist to the journey, because we have to be, uh, stated, we didn't, we didn't. They said it before. Do you all have any stats or just, uh, actually?
He just wanted to be out.
Yep.
That's why you're not office over.
I'd rather organize.
Aye. Moving down to LG's.
This. Item order as well. Um, Mrs. Duran found out on Monday that they qualified to go to national competition. And they have to be, they have, they have to begin purchasing airline tickets, uh, now, and so, um, uh, she asked me, or I guess it was Friday, it was before, uh, the court, um, posted the agenda, but, um, so that's where that she went. And that one will be in lieu of the Phoenix, um, event that they were wanting to go to.
Or students.
Next. The motion is second time. Aye. Opposed. Very near the motion carries.
I didn't care about, so I didn't.
Oh, he did, he did.
I did, I didn't see some, I didn't personally. Uh, moving on to the board of the centers. The motion is second time. Aye, opposed, very near the motion carries. Uh, we're looking at facility money funds, we've entered pretty, um, corporates. Previously approved, initially money funds to accommodate these products. Um, and we keep recurring it, it's a full cost. It, we're drawing money. So we just keep catching it, perhaps there's something there that we have to. That may hold. So the, if not necessarily, there are cracks, cracks are going to happen, that's one of the issues is, um, a couple years ago, there was a repair, um, to fix the bed spots, um, repair. So this is to fix the bed spots, um, for me, if they look at, um, the way, um, my director, uh, Mr. Matt explained it to me, is we don't expect, we do have, they don't, we don't have, they don't, we just. So, um, bringing this to you to get improved, so we can work, um, supplies, next, um, we know that it's a temporary solution. I expect, but I don't follow the. And recognition for the, uh, we're still some, some posts, um, as, uh, turn off the sales director, um, as well, that we're still some, some, both department, also a free, uh, fact, you know. But we don't, I don't possibly be able to, 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 to fix that, maybe, uh, portion of the, uh, that we see next, um, I would like to, uh, set up work out with, uh, so it's, um, usable for the string, um, so I'd like to leave the money, um, uh, the, um, perfect continuation projects, um, only on a, for twenty, twenty thousand. And then we see detail from two cafeteria, forty thousand plus two hundred and sixty thousand, um, the way we need, um, that it's worth seeing, um, of our emergency repairs funds. I just had it to, you like the emergency repairs funds for all of it, um, as you're, all of it, all of it, into the solar, and, uh, we have, uh, the. Again, all of the projects that I'm suggesting that we have moved away from, can be, we have, seriously, we're still, we're still, we're still.
So you're willing to take this year twenty five, you think tomorrow, and what was it?
Be needing, um, to, uh, like, continuation, take those, um, those two projects, and then, but the reason we, uh, we're, uh, uh, I, the, we, uh, we're, uh, we're, which is your, your, so again.
Yeah, who, who does the? The proxy.
That's the large option. So we're, we're looking into those four things, do we, we can do, we can get, get information on from our insurance, maybe, maybe, what we can do, and maybe some textures, um, high gloss, department, so we can call it. But, uh, yes, we're looking into it, it's just, um, to be able to, so it's a budgetary, to maybe, the project, uh, issue.
So the project estimated two hundred and ten thousand bucks for installation of materials, whatever the materials we choose to go with.
Any. Correct, um, based on timing for the abatement, it's just, given the quality, and people taking it long, they just don't have enough time, they'd be able to start the project, potentially finish the abatement, but not, but any glory now. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of.
So then you're looking at taking about twenty five to thirty thousand.
I must, the part I like to choose, other like, uh, take a little bit of money from. We did reach out to state, uh, trustee, there's some, that's just to, to reach out to state to see if they're willing, uh, to state, to help with, uh, this. I think we will wait, direct to the location, we can do a question. Trustee Thompson, uh, like, we're. Um, he just reiterated that without repairs, it's unplayable, explains me basketball terms, it's the world, I kind of know, but they're dead spots. But in a crack, you kind of try to avoid feeding the crack, and hopefully it always will there. In this case, it's a big area, it hits that, it's dead, well, it's about.
It's bubbling, so you can figure out where it is.
Yeah, and these big sections of ground, it makes it really unplayable and unfair and unmanageable. Cracks are not ideal, it is kind of more predictable and more typical, and they see that more in terrible time. And they see it other courses that have aged, eventually have to be dealt with, and when they try.
So do we have any conversations or questions on the winter athletic schedules other than the middle school's not fully complete yet? So they'll be coming back when they are. I will move to approve as posted. Sorry, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the facilities director job description.
We had a lot of conversations, so um just I put it as you know, it's on here as action, but if there are additional changes, I can bring it back. I tried to capture what we talked about.
Question. Why did you take supervision of custodial staff?
Because currently the principals um do the evaluations for the custodial staff in the buildings because they work with them on a daily basis and see their work on a daily basis. The um the facilities director participates in um interviews for those positions and and the the training of those positions, but the principal um evaluates them just because they're the ones working with the building.
But the custodian, the head custodian has a need, he doesn't he goes to the facilities director to get supplies or
Right.
direction on fixing something or whatever.
So when I see the word supervise, I'm thinking who's doing the evaluation? If you want me to change the language of that, I certainly can. That was the lenses.
Call it for evaluation purposes or something like that.
Well, I would think though that he, the head uh the facilities director should be involved in the evaluation as well. It shouldn't just be the building principal.
Um they they uh typically do it collaboratively. I mean, the the facilities director does get to see them and get input to the into them.
But I think that's backwards. I really do. I think the building principal should be giving input to the facilities director if there's problems or um weaknesses or areas of improvement that need to occur within the custodian um as opposed to it coming directly from the building principal. Because um if we're hiring a facilities director, they should be overseeing all of the staff underneath them to ensure that they are meeting uh their the needs and the potentials of the positions that they're hired for. I don't think that comes from the building principal at all.
I just, I think we, it used to be that way and what we what what we struggled with was the um facilities director could speak to the communication that they were having, but they couldn't necessarily speak to the day-to-day tasks of the and so that's why
But then I would think that's when the building principal would be seeing who kind of called here. As opposed to the building principal just taking the lead. I would just see that as part of the problem that we had before in other positions. So I think uh the facilities director needs to supervise the custodial staff with an understanding that you know, they're working collaboratively with the building principal. And the building principal has issues with the custodian and the facilities director. So that everything is safe. I'm not by any means saying ex- the building principal. I'm just saying the building principal should be communicating more with the facilities director if there are issues, problems, or concerns. So that the facility di- director is involved in what he's supposed to be doing, which is or her, him or her, in training the person, um making sure they're meeting the needs. Because if there is a problem in of performance and it could be something universal that maybe the facilities director doesn't realize needs to occur in a building. So he's not going to train that. Or is it specifically individual that this person just lacks the capacity to do what's needed? And I think the facilities director should be involved in that and overseeing.
Yeah, I I I would agree. There needs to be some collaboration from a practical standpoint on a day-to-day basis. Mrs. Smith in classroom F comes down and says, my room didn't get cleaned last night. You know, is the principal supposed to call the facilities director and say, hey, Mrs. Smith's
Well, that's what we're hearing, that's what we're hearing now.
The building principal should be requiring things of a custodian that's not in their job description. And who's that custodian going to go to if they have frustrations, concerns? Their supervisor, which is the building principal? No, they should be going to the facilities director and saying, hey, can we work on this and get this resolved? That's my point.
I just asked a clarifying question when you said evaluations because that would be very low on one person. There's no way that the facilities director could do a good job with the number of nighttime custodians.
Isn't there a lead custodian? Is there a lead custodian?
Uh yeah. But even then, you're we're, I mean, we're talking about a lot of people, so that takes him out of the mix as far as doing anything with regard to work for the facilities through for
How many custodians do we have?
We have eleven head custodians and and then each building has uh elementary stuff like three nighttime custodians, high schools have more than more than that. I don't know for sure. I would say we're probably talking somewhere between thirty and four to five nighttime um or additional custodians. So you're talking about close to sixty.
Okay. So if the ceilings director, because you have on here um assist the order of training of custodian staff. So are you saying they're not training the staff now? That that'll make a They, yes. Okay. Well then, if I, to me, still supervising the custodian staff, if they're overseeing just the leads, that's fine because the leads should be overseeing.
There's one of those.
There's one lead custodian. I thought you said there was eleven.
Those are head custodians, so.
So we have a lead custodian, we have a head custodian, and we have a custodian.
Yeah, we have a lot.
Quite.
We have the custodial staff. So Chris Philski is the one who provides all the ocean drinking for our custodial group. He shares the agenda with the facilities directors or the director of the in in that sheet, the chemical sheet, and they go through all of that. So I just want to make sure that I'm I'm really clear about what groups we're talking about. Because right now, the way it the way it's set up, the nighttime custodians are evaluated by the head custodian building because they report directly to the custodian. With regard to, I need more I need more of my spray for my desk.
So then what does the lead do?
The lead custodian is the one who does, he does all the training, he works with the um, he's in, he works with the inventory system of all of the supplies, he does all the ordering for the whole district. He um works on repairing the machines that are not working, he
Okay, so how does he filter into the head custodian? Or does he not?
He's at the, he's actually at the facilities office and so um he's, and the head custodian needs something. They don't go to the Okay. There've been several layers added.
It's a loose of layers.
And that's, so that's, I just want to make sure that I'm capturing that through.
I do believe though I wiped out our ribs? Okay, gotcha. Um yeah, I I understand that. Maybe that's bothering you. Um so I still believe though that the facilities director is supervising the custodial staff. And getting down into the nitty-gritty of that, whether or not, as Lob said, I think once you review the hierarchy you can figure all that out instead of it being quite so like that, that would resolve the fear that you have that, you know, we're not saying
He's in charge of that head.
So that's why I'm saying
The head custodian is, he's in charge of the head custodians. The head custodian is right up the, right up the people on your neighborhood, making jokes and with the president.
Alright.
As far as qualifications I I put in there the minimum lifetime experience in trades office. I just wanted to make sure because we had a lot of conversation and I want to make sure that you, there wasn't something that you wanted to be specified that I
You might want to put on there what they're responsible for. So the building, we have eleven schools. Plus district office, maintenance office.
But it's not just the school. This is right, so the entire site. The three thousand whatever millions you have on We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That concludes all the action items. We're moving into the discussion items. We have the city draft from MOU.
Successfully schedule every significant practices in um the facility that best meets their needs. Uh it was very collaborative, um very positive. And uh this is the hardest, uh three seasons, this is the hardest one to schedule and we had zero problems doing it. So
Amazing what you're accomplishing this down together.
Yeah.
Um item number four, all of that language is from the custodial's agreement and I don't understand why it's still in the MOU.
Um
Those were all the terms and if you go
Everything under four, um A through E?
Yep. And G?
Um can I ask then the five A was also specific to the joint powers, that that language isn't in yet?
The point was was not to to use that joint power agreement format that they had given. Because there is specific language and statute to a joint powers agreement, that's why.
It's already, yeah.
Yeah.
So liability, that probably also is part of the um
I think that's a good to have in any
Okay.
Things, especially since they're using our buildings. Yeah.
And then insurance should be defined.
Yeah.
And I did define the intention, I know everyone set an agreement and changed it to a memorandum.
Okay.
So hopefully I didn't miss any. Um how about eleven? I don't, worse.
I think that's, that's legally as it can go out. Well, what if there's a clause in there about, specific to the weather? So if there is, instead of two years, just, which I think two years is a good idea. I think there should also be a clause in there that if, you know, there are um significant weather issues.
That's subjective, I guess. Two years is subjective. I I hear what you're saying.
But what if on a third year, we have a drought?
Yeah, right. Well, let's go for three years. But I I do think it should be more than one year because you could get in a non like
You could have a really wet summer.
How much does it cost to water the football field, you think, a year?
Well, I think it will become more reasonable once we get it all
I'm just
Spickler.
Yeah, I'm just saying like, what do you think?
I I don't know, I couldn't remember.
Well, since it's not
I'd go, I'd go for three years.
Yeah.
When there's going in.
Mm-hmm. Um also, on the city waiver, there was conversation about the fact, because the way both paragraphs are written, it's extremely um subjective to the council. I had mentioned that on the previous uh one of the joint powers agreements we had, there was a specific dollar amount. And the council entertained that idea. So I think there should be a flat rate.
So you you mentioned that to me, so I reached out to Leon to see what the, because you asked
Mm-hmm.
To what the flat rate might be and then his response back was that the um he gave us kind of a no.
Then let's re-watch the tape. Because we did record the meeting. And we did have conversation and the the councilmen were like, that sounds plausible.
He, let's see. He did, um Leon did suggest that, so keeping with the topic, I think you should include the shared facilities from the city which are Cooper Field and Majestic Fields for practices and games, so that we're not just saying, uh because they do allow us to use their fields at at with, without paying fees for um just so that it's in there, so that that continues.
Okay.
That was uh that was
So that would be fine.
Yeah, there's, there's a clause in that paragraph that is nebulous to us and we don't know what the rapper, I mean, that's wow. Particularly as it applies to cap fees, for example.
Right.
Uh or impact fees. Those could be significant on a project building of school, for example. It's every thousand, thousands of dollars.
Well, they can't waive all of the cap fees because they're sewer fees, uh sewer cap fees are
Associated.
Determined by Coast Falls. Yeah. And Coast Falls, we're not asking Coast Falls to to waive.
Water fees, water cap fees are different. Impact fees are
Okay, so um we, I
Here's an idea.
I hope I can
No, that's okay. What if we determined, I mean, based off of this year, if they were a third party, what their cost of fees would be to use all of our facilities? Because if they don't understand the benefit they're getting, how can they in return give us a benefit on our city fee waivers? Because I, I mean, it seems like the way this is all playing out is it doesn't really cost anything for the buildings. Um however It does. Besides the wear and tear on our If we Exactly. So if we have a dollar figure to say, look, you are getting this much of a benefit, how much of a benefit can you give us on city fees? Waivers, that's where a number needs to come from, so that we are comparing apples to apples. And they can't come back and say, well, gosh, we just can't do that because, you know, that's a lot of dollars. Well, if we started charging you, it's a lot of dollars too. As opposed to just picking a random number out of the air, which opposed to, but um at least if we have something to back up our request.
Well, for example, you you worked out the schedule
Yep.
Of coming year.
For one season.
If we're not the city and we're a third party uh and we were to apply fees for each one of those uses, you know, what would that constitute?
Would we have like last year's for for the other seasons? Would we have like last year's for for the other seasons?
They used it for entire year last year.
Perfect. Yep. And Rebecca, if you could can compare like their last year's winner with this year's winner that we've scheduled for, to see if there is a major increase, you know, even if it's five percent, then mark that five percent off on all the other seasons. Just as an anticipation.
And I will go back and um rewatch the joint meeting.
Okay.
To find that conversation.
Okay.
To see that the city said about those fees. So I'll continue to work on these.
Perfect. Any further discussion on the MOU with the city of bathroom? Nope.
No.
Reports to the board.
So um, as we're working through policy, Michelle um sneaks at me every time we come to a policy that says that the superintendent will report to board on this, and she she's she's just laughs again, says there's another report for you. So um while Lynn was working from home, she went through all of our policies and created this document that shows the policies that require some sort of report from the superintendent to the school board, and then we just looked at, a lot of them we've been doing. So we just kept those dates, um and then looking at the ones we've been doing, we tried to offset some of the new ones, so they're not all going at the same time.
Perfect.
So that's the intent of that.
Awesome.
Did you all listen to your spare time?
No, Lynn did it.
Lynn did that.
Oh, the reports, creating the reports, yeah, yeah.
I have lots of spare time.
Looks like roughly every month.
Mm-hmm, there's something. As long as you're okay with the way that looks.
Working very diligently.
He felt like the board should participate in some way, and so I just, I that's that's the last item that I put on there, it's just, is there something in particular that that you guys want to do um that I can help set up? I I don't want to preclude you, so I'm just opening that for the conversation.
Well, you've already held a number of meetings, I I what I was thinking was, you know, it would be good if one of or two of us could attend some of these meetings that you're having with staff or or outside groups as well, just to s- show the board's support for what's being discussed. That was, that was really all I had.
Okay. I am, um, I did reach out to the three um TV news stations, so one of them. Sure. Which one? It is, somebody was out here today doing uh a news um casting on the SRO grant that we got, but they didn't, they didn't talk to us, they just stood outside of the district office. Rebecca went out and asked, what are you doing? And then uh, so in that conversation, she said, no, we reached out to you guys to see if you'd be willing to come talk to the superintendent about our levy, and so they're going to be coordinating tomorrow at one thirty, so I'm meeting with them new. Where I do a little interview, um, just trying to figure out all the different ways to get word out to patrons that were running levy, um, what we're doing about it, what we're doing with money. The um flyer that uh that the board approved should be hitting mailboxes um within the next couple of days, because those have been sent. So I'm going to every address, but and then uh during the press release, when I press, but now everybody gets that, so just trying to hit every avenue, so if you can think of something we're missing, just let me know.
We know that you've uh had a presentation for Spirit Chamber, have you have you reached out to other groups in history?
Spirit Lake Chamber, um, I'm going to Apple City Council on um Tuesday next week. Um, I missed the Apple Days, um, and I don't know if the Apple Chambers. I can't find any. And I have not been to baby, only got baby.
Have you thought about the the clubs? For the sports clubs?
Um.
There's a hundred fifty kids signed up for wrestling, junior tackle, junior cheer.
I have not personally gone and talked to those people, I know um Will Ryder talked to Tim Lake, junior tackle, and they said something about all of their grants, make sure they had information. Um, if, yeah, if you want to give me contact information, I would happily um reach out and see if I could do that.
Holy spike.
You gotta get invited to doughnuts. Coffee and doughnuts.
Did you bring doughnuts, say what?
No. I just was in there and they invited me to doughnuts, so I sat down and talked to them.
At Golden Spike?
Yeah.
Nice, did you talk to them about the levy?
No, this was when I was running. Cause I got kicked out, but one of the members goes, hey, you want to come to coffee and doughnuts, I'd like your. But you can find somebody to invite you.
I think they they may have a real.
Solicitation.
But they did let us in the last time.
Did they? Well, it's a good place to go if they're like.
Lynn and I both as principals at Betty Keepall want to build a positive relationship with that community. And there's a lot of collaboration, so they were very open to letting us come, so I'll reach out. And if you think of anybody else in the middle of the night while you're sleeping, just shoot me an email the next morning.
Not not in the middle of the night, because I'm not answering. You like two AM texts.
No, I don't, do not. So I I try really hard not to be awake at two AM, it's a rule for you, um, but.
Did we partner like we did before with the local area churches? This go around?
We have, we have uh reached out to Real Life and um Apple Baptist are the two um that we have the biggest ones that we have, yes, but not, the, we, you know, we, last year we met with pastors quarterly, and by the end of the year, we have.
And dwindled down to like.
Two.
Two.
So um.
But maybe even an email communication to them, as a, you're still on our radar because we're still partnering with you, would probably go a lot farther than to just not. Just because we made such a point to be connected to all of them before, I think it's important to do the same, I mean. Not all the coffee and doughnut thingies, just let them know that we're still partnering with them. Okay. Any other information or conversation on that date for the levy?
The goal is to get all three uh news stations.
All right, moving on to the expulsion protocol. Um, it's just letting us know. Uh, oops, don't do that. The when, where, how. Also for staff. To know um what to do. Where to start, yeah, what reaches the level of coming before the board. Um, any conversation we need to have on that? It's a good, thank you. Looks good. Um, Bob's asked for the master schedule, so the secondary master schedule was provided to us. I'm a little disheartened by some of the class sizes, but guess it is what it is.
Yes, well, we're gonna, we actually spent a lot of time today talking about that, because we made those budget cuts last spring. We tried to, we said we're gonna protect those twelve positions where people had to have to do retirement or resignation. But that that decision was based on thinking we were gonna have four to four hundred kids in school, and we have four to six fifty. And um, we're not quite sure what that means as far as funding, are are we gonna be, will we get more funds than what we thought we were going to get? Thinking we had fewer kids, but ADA plays a role in it. But we, out of those twelve, we've actually replaced seven because of the, or eight, because of the um increased enrollment. And we still have pockets where we're large.
Yeah, we do.
We're trying, which we, what we don't want is to have a million dollar deficit, so we're trying to be.
I understand that, but I do think you're impacting the educational environment when you've got thirty to thirty-four kids in class. And that, I think, needs to be a priority.
Yeah, well, uh, our plan is actually to bring this whole topic of conversation to the board in November, so we can have a bigger discussion about it, and you can give us a little bit of direction.
Perfect.
Because that we we may need to add a couple of staff members to address large class sizes, but I, we're, we are uncomfortable enough with where we are budget wise, that we don't want to make that decision, we do need to make that decision. We're gonna bring that to you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to the secondary master schedules, oh wait, no, we just did that. Veterans Memorial, uh, would actualize.
So Mr. Hoffman and I um talked and looked at uh other possible locations on like one high school property for the Veterans Memorial. And his, his actually, I um I think it's, it's, it was his first choice, was to shift it down a little bit further, still on that grassy area, but right adjacent to the teacher parking lot. So still inside the fence line, but there's parking right there for people who do want to come and and visit it, um, that isn't necessarily impacting the school. Um, I did reach out to Megan to ask if there were any concerns uh from her perspective about building such a thing on our uh high school campus. Um, she did not have any concerns, other than she just cautioned us uh about making sure that we don't have anything that's overtly religious since it's gonna be on school grounds. But other than that, she didn't have any concerns about it being on the school ground. Um. I just, if if we're, if we're going to do this, um, I just, I feel a little bit of a sense of urgency to 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 say, yes, we're going to move this forward, so that um Larry Quinby can can reap the benefits of it and enjoy it. So um, anyway, I I just wanted to, I didn't want it to just kind of lay and and kind of wait. I wanted to bring it back and propose the alternate um location, because I think that was the biggest stumble last last time with where the, it was proposed to be. Um, because that sidewalk is inside that fence line, we we always have people on like on high school campus. Um, and we may have a few more, but I would anticipate that the few more are going to be people who are interested in the Veterans Memorial, um, I guess we don't know that for sure, but by moving it off, so it's not centered and adjacent to the building and further away, um, Jimmy felt like that was, that would be a much better location.
But I think if it's center, it's receiving its purpose, which is for basically everyone to see it. And if we ever have to expand the teacher parking lot, we have nowhere to go, because we've just consumed it all. So I don't.
I just know that there was concern from other board members about having it right there in the center, so I don't, I didn't want that to be the stumbling block to take us from moving forward.
No, and I appreciate that, I think it would be ideal in the center, that's I believe. That would be a question for Mingle.
Let me check that out, because that's kind of getting in the way of some of what we're trying to make along, make sure that.
And you might want to go ahead and ask the joint.
Interestingly enough, yeah, that's a good question, but if it's on school property, it eventually will become a school district asset.
Do uh, oh shit, like what Guinness did, and has a hundred year lease for one dollar for where their room company is, and you know, it's already, I think it's a, maybe it's a thousand year, I don't know, it's some bizarre lease. Yeah.
Okay, well, I will reach out to any way. Um, but if the board could approve the location and at least give us permission to start to work forward, that would be really helpful. Or I can bring back what we find out remaining, and you can take action, however you want to do that.
Well, I think your suggestion is, has merit, adds to location. Because it would actually be easier for people to access. Come in, park, access it, be right there. Creep across half the school area. And from a maintenance standpoint, it might be.
Where they talk about.
Who's responsible.
Yes, there's less.
It's a, you know, it's a unique situation, because don't go on school property. Don't go on school property, so it becomes a whole ass. So as, as an asset, I'm like, not unlike, you know, a failure or a test or something else. No responsibility, I think, I take care of. If it gets bad, why is it responsible when it comes in?
I guess I can, again, I go back to my mind, it's a gift to the district and community. And once you're gifted something, then we're responsible for taking care of it. I don't, I don't think there's an entity attached to this particular gift that would be able to maintain.
Well, I would move to approve um the Veterans Memorial at LHS in the center, where it was initially requested. She's, she said she's moving to approve it in the center where it was originally requested. I will second that. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Three in favor, one opposed. Motion carries. All right, um, we have project request.
Just so you know, the, the area where our current Lakeview School District sign is, you know, on top of that other mound of dirt, that mound of dirt got put there for reason. It got put there when this state highway department asked for some property across from the high school site. And part of the agreement was, of course, they had to be fenced and thing. But that mound of dirt was put there, if you, if you just look at it, it's strategically placed. So if a vehicle goes through the intersection and through the fence, it hits that mound of dirt before it comes to the high school. That's what that's uh. So if you're talking about doing what here's just passed, you know, you're gonna do it the way we got it. There's gonna be a, a ride out here that's around the whole thing. There's a big, big statue out there in the morning part of it. I don't know, probably stop the dirt.
So maybe that is something we need to make sure that uh there is a protection of the school grounds whence it's established um for this memorial that, you know, there's a very. Kind of like the little poles of the post office.
Even though people were wearing spanx in that in the middle of them.
Such as what you're saying?
I think with spanx.
On first owners. The other thing is, if I recall, we had some question about whether it be placed along front toward the building or.
Oh, yeah.
If it goes long form toward the building, it's gonna be very close to the building.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it long.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do it that way. I'd do it long enough. Because then you're gonna take up a lot of room that way.
Yeah.
I would like to make a second motion that um the the layout and design of the project be brought back before the board for approval in the position that was uh approved to be laid out on.
Is that a motion or is that just a request?
I said I'd like to make a motion, so that's my motion. Sorry. Just letting you know.
My, my second will stand.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I wasn't modifying my motion. That's gonna be a second motion. Moving on to the project request protocol. So there's a protocol if a facility needs a project.
So what was happening is, is that we had these large projects that were being undertaken and um there were times when the facilities director didn't know that any of that work was happening, wasn't brought into the loop. And then didn't know about it until there was an emergency and something had to be fixed because something happened with it. Um, and so we, we just worked on putting the protocol in place so that we at least know that, like, for example, the Timberlake um junior tackle, they're bringing the electricity and all of that. Um, I wanted to make sure that the director was out there when they're doing the work, so they're not cutting through irrigation lines or, you know, there needs to be somebody from the district who is the point person for those things. So that's the, that was the um in- intention behind it, it's just so that and there's so much that happens in the district and it's, if, if I'm not putting some systems in place, things are happening and I don't know how to.
Right.
Trying to just.
And that's all, okay.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily about saying no to people, it's just what money, what money are we using? It's to make sure you're not obligating us from the district for that, or if you are, what is it gonna cost? And then like tonight, the tennis courts, that came through this, we brought to you. That way the board has an opportunity. So that's the intention.
Wouldn't you wish that we, yeah, okay, perfect. Any comments or input on the project request protocol?
You will?
I think that's great. Uh, moving on to the district leadership team. Um, I asked for this to become a discussion item because the board doesn't know who's part of the district leadership team or at least I didn't know what its primary function was. Um, you hear all sorts of things, but until you know, you don't know. Um, so can you explain who is part of the district leadership team?
Um, so we have uh Lynn and myself and Kelsey and then um Brooke, Jessica, Chelsea. Um, we meet with all of the um operations directors, so the facilities director, the transportation director, the child nutrition director, technology. Um, they come for the first part and we just, they talk through things under our plates. Um, if there are things we need to make some decisions about, if there are things that have anything to do with money. Um, and then if there are issues that are specific to the building, we invite the building principal to come. We update the building principal, we, uh, every week on, on what, what happens at the meeting. Um, because I can't pull them out of the buildings, but this really is just, um, it's my opportunity to touch base with the, the leadership of the district and just, um, anything that's gonna require district funds to be used comes to the team so that, um, we can all look at it. Jessica is part of. Sure, um, part of the conversation, so she's looking at the budget and can we, i- 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 is this in the budget that the board approved? Uh, and how would we fund it? Um, again, it's, we have a large district and this is just my way of organizing myself to make sure that I'm staying on top of it. Uh, and it helps us also be proactive if we have, um, issues that are coming from one of our buildings or, um, a concern or, um, they have a brainstorm, by the way, to do something better. It's just a, it's, it's just a great, um, it's worked really well for us just to manage our time efficiently and stay on top of, of things that are happening so we can be proactive. That's the intention.
How long have we had it?
Um, well, I would say that Becky probably started it. Um, and then when she left, we modified it so that it benefited personalities and totally do things. Um, but I did like the meeting once a week and touching base of, um, making sure that, it just, it forces us to slow down for a minute and not make decisions on the fly when we don't have all the information we might make an impulsive decision that, that isn't gonna be in the best interest of the district, so. Um, and then, you know, Lynn, Kelsey and I are pulling three different directions all the time. This forces us to be in the same room at least once a week to, to bring each other up to speed on things that are conversations we've had and things that might be, um, problems for teachers or principals that we need to, uh, really.
So we also wait once a week.
We do it on Mondays and then I get all of the information for the principals at a newsletter. I send out Monday following the district leadership team, so that, um, things are captured on that.
So district leadership team goes over the project requests. Is that correct?
Okay, and then a- anytime like, uh, if, if, um, Kelsey feels like we need to hire an additional hero because we've got, um, high numbers at the school, we'll bring that. Um, and then talk about the cost of all and, you know, where are we with the budget? Which is actually what prompted the conversation today to bring to you guys. This is what we talked about last spring with the, with the not replacing those twelve people. Um, and, uh, we, that you need to be part of that conversation, so it just allows us to all stay on top of that so that we can bring to you like the, and, and the board, um, agenda items are all part of the conversation. What do we need to take to the board this month? Make sure we get feedback on that.
Well, and I think, I mean, the, the fact that the project for like the tennis courts got before us and we were able as a board to decide, let's move this money from here and this money from there, as opposed to it just being done and we're going, why are our projects not getting done? And nobody's communicating that. Um, I think that's significantly valuable, that the projects, if they are, you know, substantial, which I think anything, are all over ten thousand is substantial, because that money has to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
And the board should be weighing in on them. It shouldn't be left to the leadership team to decide yea or nay, when we should have the right to say, you know what, that is a priority for our district. It should, the money should come from here. And we know that we're moving what we've already asked to be done, as opposed to at the end of the year going, why? Is none of our stuff done?
Right. Yep.
So.
Yeah, we're on the same page and this, this just forces us to have those conversations. Um, and if there, if we have a job that is going to be, um, a significant, like this was a significant cost, we're not making those decisions, but when you put the budget together, you did with, um, some line items in there that we can use for some of the smaller things, especially the doctor right next to you all the time. Um, and those are part of the conversation, is, is this something that we probably need to take to the board and have the board weigh in on, so that's part of the discussion that we have on Mondays. And that's really how the, the agenda gets built for you guys. I have a doctorate, but Nora, can I share? And we just, as we're talking and things come up that we think this needs to be a discussion of the board that we all think, so that we make sure that we cover it, so that's what I'll.
Okay. Thank you, because yeah, there's a lot of, um, we've, we've had some obstacles before in the past, which we haven't had in the last couple of years or so. Um, just wanted to make sure we're on the right page.
Yep.
Um, the community survey result, results, Bob, you asked for it to be put on the agenda?
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of things. You know, we had some very brief discussion about it, uh, two, three months ago. The fact that it occurred, but we never really, uh, reviewed it or discussed it. You know, I think one of, excuse me, one of the issues is, uh, the question that's asked about probably being, I think, about the four days. We never weighed in on that as a whole. At least think about it. Uh, the other thing is, uh, the thing that struck me initially was that there were other comments in the surveys uh, about the board itself. And, uh, you know, we think we need to take a look at some of that, you know, find ways to create more positive ideas in terms of places and board and staff and that kind of stuff. Anyway, that's, that's what I asked for.
Okay.
I do think that we have community members who are interested to know, especially with this levy coming up. Is the board, what is the board gonna do about the four days for a week? It's causing a little bit of anxiety for some.
It's not meant to be a healthy situation, I'd say.
Or if they're watching home in the dark and it makes mirrors.
So, you know, I, I don't see a compelling reason why you would make that move. That's my personal opinion.
Um, it was interesting. I would say that probably, just based on the raw data, it's about a sixty-five, thirty-five split, sixty-five in favor of, thirty-five against. But what is problematic is we, I, I know for a fact that we have people who took the, who did this twice. So I don't know when, when you're able to do that, I don't know how valid the results are because.
Well, I think there are a number of senior high students.
Exactly, yeah, they, and, yeah, we had teachers who shared the link with that, so.
Tainted view, uh, in that situation.
Yeah, I would agree with that, so I don't know how accurate the results actually are, but.
Well, respectfully, the reason I asked for it to be put on the survey a year and a half ago or two years ago, whenever it was, was because at the time, post falls had moved to four day and Porta Lane was, at that time, we were told they were going to four days. But then they did not end up doing that, so it was just to get a pulse on our community. It wasn't about saying, let's direct our district to go there, because if we don't know what the community wants and we're like, we're going to four days, we're not doing our due diligence and we can't do it at the last minute. It was more about just finding out what is the pulse. It wasn't about us saying, yes, we're going or no, we're not, because since we've done this poll, we've also found out from the superintendent of, uh, public education that, you know, now there's gonna be dollars tied to whether or not you're doing a full day school week. You're gonna get less if you're doing four days, which you're not shorting what the kids are having to learn and what the teachers are required to work, you're just shorting yourself financially. So, I mean, we didn't have that information when I said, just ask the question, because you can sit and ponder both sides of the fence all you want, but if you don't know what the public wants, it's, to me, harder to make a decision because you're, you're just going off of a small hand, handful of input. So we've done a survey. I would think that a lot of where our district is headed or going to go will depend on the November election. will depend on the November election. Cause if the levy doesn't pass, then we have more conversations to have. And it's not necessarily about four days a week. If the levy passes, I still think we have questions to address. But not to the significant level as to how are we gonna manage a, a nine, almost ten million dollar shortfall. So I don't know that it merits a yes or no to the four day. Because to me, the intention was just gathering the information. Are we going, you know, with the public support going in that direction? Or would the public not support it? We have, honestly, to me, it's a fifty-fifty split. So, okay, so you know, maybe um we'd have half the community upset with us one way or the other. But I didn't ask for it to be surveyed because that was the direction we were headed. I just wanted to know, what does the community feel about this when they've got post falls at four days? And they've got Cortalane doing whatever they're doing right now. But you know, they were headed towards four days. Because we've always, well, I shouldn't, let me rephrase my words. Under different administration, it was all about, you know, staying in the club of what post falls is doing, what Cortalane is doing. I'm not that way. I think Lakeland beats to his own drum and should always be the leader, not the follower. So without knowing what the public wanted or where they sit, it's kind of hard to make some decisions. So now we know it's fifty-fifty. At the time, the survey was done. Maybe if we did another survey, it would be different. I don't know. But to me, it wasn't about, we need to make this decision right now. It was about, what's the pulse of the community? And so maybe it wasn't worded the way I would have worded it. I don't know. But um, that was the point of me even putting it out there, saying, why don't you ask since you're sending a survey anyway? Why don't you ask? So yeah, I mean, I don't really think there is an answer other than at this moment, we're not doing a four day school week. And whether we choose to do that in the future, I think it's dependent on a whole bunch of other factors that we don't have right now. So it's, it's not like we're entertaining that question at the moment.
Right. And it isn't a decision that we could make very quickly because there are a lot, for us, there are a lot of challenges that we would have to.
Correct. So, I mean, to answer the community, if you're getting calls or whatnot, I mean.
It's more, I mean, just seeing it on social media a little bit, because the levy people are, they're just wondering what happened to that survey? What are we doing about it? Are we going to a four day week? Just kind of something like that.
Well, that's today. So any ideas to your comment, Bob, about the relations of the board with apparently staff members?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I don't know if the board members have spent much time going through that. I think it's valuable to do that. Not that we need to dwell on the issue, but uh it's, it's important feedback, just like uh the other questions. And if there are little bits and pieces in there that, you know, give us signals about how we can create better relationships, uh, well.
The agenda gets posted and they come here and public info that they want. Most of the time, there's nobody here.
I don't, I don't want to labor the point. I just suggest that. Yeah, the survey, we ought to take a look at it.
Which, I mean, it did come before the board and we did uh look through it. Um, I, I don't know that we dwelled much on it. But I hear what you're saying. I guess what I'm trying to find out is, is there anything specific on here right now that you want to address?
Well, the, the four day, we figured we needed to at least, you know, touch on that. The rest of it is, is, needs to be internalized, I guess, and all that.
Okay. Perfect. Is there anything else on the community survey? Conversation, input, whatnot? Nope. Okay, it's on track. I could touch on it later. Let's keep it moving.
Yeah.
All right. Um, the last discussion item is an October special meeting?
We have a, a, there you go.
We have a student hearing. Um, is there a date to whatnot preference from the board? No?
Good.
You're good? Any day?
Yep.
Okay. So you know. Well, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Cause I won't be here tomorrow or Friday. And we can do that. And that's why I said, never mind. All right. Yeah. You don't want something that quick? All right. So you can, we can work on a date, whatnot, when you've got all the ducks in a row so that we figure out the timeline?
We're just, we're pretty close to the ducks.
Okay. All right.
Very close.
Is there anything else um people would like to have for future agenda items?
Yeah, I got, I wanna see about the funds that we collect from our sports teams and how that money goes back into the district.
Between facilities.
Facility use fees.
Yeah, I talked to Jessica and we're gonna put together uh how much money over the last five years have we received from the different teams? And what did, what was that my stat on? So she's, so we'll bring that in November.
Okay.
Um, one of the, can I, can I ask for, maybe if possible, to get an idea? Um, we talked about potentially participating in the day on the hill, we don't know if that ISBA, but we'll.
Right.
I, I just really think it's important that we're face to face with our legislators and have conversations.
Okay.
We do have professional development dollars.
Right.
That we have at the state, which I think would be an appropriate use of um those funds to do that. So, and maybe we don't necessarily do it on the same day that ISBA is doing it. Um, or we do, however you wanna do that, but.
I think it would give us more opportunity to actually listen in on the hearings than, than not. That would be huge.
It's always that, um, Sunday, Monday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, uh President's Day weekend. It's always over President's Day. Like I think Monday is actually the day on.
Well, and you might uh reach out to Jordan and say, hey, that we wanna come participate. What days do you think would be best for our trustees to be down there? What would give us the most.
Highest potential for.
Being heard or.
Right.
Yes. And I'm not sure if he's on the education committee. Maybe you could ask him who is and.
I think they're still waiting on some elections before decisions are made yet for that. But um, I am working with him to try and find a different date to meet before I go.
Okay, perfect.
I'm just gonna call it Lakeland's day.
So with, going back to Dave's uh request on the facilities use monies, um, can you just answer for us right now, where do those dollars go typically?
Um, to support the facilities. So, um, uh, you know, we, we have, we pay every year to refinish the gym floors. Those dollars can, those dollars help with the supplies and those kinds of things. Um, if uh we have another field or court or uh we used, I don't know what to say for sure. We had to put a permanent fence up at Lake High School for the girls softball. Cause we have to knock permanent. I don't know if we use the facility use dollars for that, but I'm saying that.
Okay. So, so it sounds like the intention is for those facility dollars to go back into facility maintenance with respect to programs that are, okay.
There's not a lot of money. I asked her last year, which we had, and it was like seventy-five dollars. Yeah, we, we have, we don't collect. Most, most facilities is a category two, which is a no charge. Which means we're seventy-five percent or above Lakeland students using the facilities. So we don't charge for it. And our fees were so low that, you know, like classroom was a five dollar fee. So if you're using it for two hours, you're only bringing in ten dollars. Gyms were uh, what, twenty, twenty dollars an hour for a high school gym? So somebody uses it for a couple of hours.
Problem is though, we, did we raise them up to eighty bucks an hour?
This year, yeah.
Yeah, but we've, so everything's like tripled, quadrupled. You know, and the problem is that these clubs that are using our facilities, they have a tournament or whatever. Those clubs all donate that money back to our schools. And we're like punishing them for using our schools. You know what I'm saying? Like, I mean, Lakeland Wrestling Club has bought seven mats for this district. And that's ten thousand dollars a mat.
So we can bring the.
So, that's what I'm saying. It's just like, we're kind of slapping them in the face like the junior tackle. You know, they did the field, which would have cost probably a hundred thousand or more to have somebody else do that. They did it for, when I grew up.
Yeah, so the board approved the fees. So we just have to bring the fees back and then we can decide to not adjust them. That was part of the policy. It was really the only people who are A and Bs is really clubs and a couple of H O As. And um, and that's just here and there. We're not making money off the facilities.
Well, we weren't.
We weren't. Now we would off of tournaments. But we need it.
I'm just saying they give back the money to us. That's how they make their money. And then, you know, they're a nonprofit. So they're giving us free money basically back. So I just saw the bill for the wrestling club.
I, I know. I had chokes when I was in.
And then we're paying janitor fees fifty bucks an hour. Well, the janitors don't get paid fifty bucks an hour. They get paid.
Their wage.
Yeah.
But part of that comes from the paper products, like comes our toilet paper, our soaps. So that's all went into the janitor fee, but.
Well, I mean, they're doing extra work. They get a sniping or do they get extra pay or they just get their regular pay?
It's their, well, unless it puts them over their forty, then they get time and half.
Okay.
So they do get extra pay if they put some over their allowance.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like it all needs to come back before us because I, I know that the board wasn't, didn't weigh in on the fee increases. The fee increases were brought to us by Jessica, that this is what we're doing. And maybe we didn't have, uh, uh, we didn't do our due diligence and conversation in discovering how this was gonna impact our community clubs. So that may merit more conversation. Um, and when you calculate the fees, please use our current rate. Um, not the five dollars. Um, well, and maybe we can, we can talk about things like in-kind donations. Yeah, being.
Which is what we used to do with even bats.
Okay.
Um, I know we did have the baseball.
I don't know if there's anything within the policy that um allows that. So we may need to revise the policy to have that. Yeah.
And I know that Jessica, she compared rates with like post falls and Cortalane and some surrounding areas to get us more in line, but.
Yes. But what we don't know is what do those community clubs do for this school district? Cause if they're not, I mean, if it's strictly a business relationship, where ours is a community relationship and we can't lose sight of ours. So, um.
Well, and some of our clubs to this point are giving. A lot back to our programs and our schools and.
Right.
I don't think we have dates to remember.